This is the Regular Board of Meeting of the President and Board of Trustees. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the House of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a Mayor for the Day contest and we had several of our students that applied for the job and they had to write an essay and we chose, actually this is from last year and this year, because last year the kids went out of school and we couldn't gather everybody up, so we decided to have them all in at the same time. So these were our top two winners and I'd like them to read their essays for us before we get started with the meeting, okay? So Nikolai, you'd like to sit down first, okay?
If I was Mayor for a day, I'd improve our citizens' health by building more parks, pools, gardens, and bike trails. The way this helps is that people will walk more, ride their bikes more, and feel more healthier by being outdoors. The way I would get the money to do all this is by building more, by increasing the amount paid by traffic ticket violations.
If I got to be Mayor for one day, I'd improve the community by building a better playground, have fundraisers for the less fortunate, and make sure kids get a proper education. By building a better playground, we would be giving the kids a reason to get out of the house and stay active. Staying active is important because after a long day of learning, instead of turning to technology for free time, running around the playground is healthier. I would do things for the less fortunate because sometimes it's good to do something kind for others without expecting anything back. I would organize blood drives, soup kitchens, visit elderly homes, and more. Lastly, if I were Mayor for a day, I would make sure students are having a good time while learning. I would give them books and pencils and provide unique activities, not only to teach the students, but to make their education more fun. By installing a finer play environment, helping the needy, and making learning really fun, we can create a happy society to improve our community tremendously. Happy community, happy mayor.
Okay, we have certificates, we also have runner-ups here also today. Are they going to read theirs too? Yes, okay. So they're going to go to the microphone up there. Hold on to that, okay? You're going to need that, okay? But we have certificates for Selena and Nikolai and it says, "Certificate of Achievement." The certificate is proudly presented to Selena in recognition of Mayor for a Day writing contest, so here you go with that. And they also got a pool pass, a year pool pass.
Awesome.
Congratulations. You also got a year pool pass, okay? Thank you very much. How much hold on to that? Please hold on to that and then when we head into the meeting, okay? You can hold on to it, okay? Hopefully I won't be, I'll use the block to notify you. Okay, so we're going to have the other runners-up read their essays and I have certificates for them also and then we have $10 gift certificates for them, so who's going first?
Sarah.
If I was a Mayor for one day, I would make our community even more friendly by inspiring people, picking them up from the ground and doing of what life is. There are so many things, you, your family, anyone can do to make our community better. To continue on, life isn't about winning prizes and other things, it's about sharing, caring, loving, and not showing yourself as a different person. It's who you are that expresses you and to make this community better, I think everyone should be themselves. If you think that you want to change something, then go do it. No one else can judge you of what you do to make this community better, it's your choice. That's what I think making this community better is, not changing yourself for anyone else. So remember, if you're a Mayor, don't let anyone else choose for you, let you choose how to make this community better.
Okay, all right, Mayor Sarah, all right. Who's next?
If I could be Mayor for one day, I would improve the health of our citizens by making sure that everyone throws away their garbage and recycles when they see recycled. I would want this to make our town a better community. I would also make sure that everyone feels safe and feels awesome in our town of Schiller Park. I would also make sure that kids that go to school get there safely and have a good education. In conclusion, I would make the community a better place as much as I could.
Congratulations, thank you for participating.
If I could be Mayor for one day, I would improve the health of our citizens by convincing our citizens to help our earth. Our forest is full of trash, recyclable things, and reusable bags. We should have a day when it's warm, the snow is melted, and everyone is free and they don't have work to do. Family, friends, and neighbors can help too. If we don't help, you and others will have a harder place to live in, and the animals too.
Good job.
If I could be Mayor for one day, I would improve the health of our citizens by asking if they could start recycling to help the earth. I would also ask them if they could donate at least five or six dollars to the children with heart disease, blood cancer, other cancers, children that can't hear or see, and children like that. And if they don't donate those five or six dollars, I would thank them by celebrating that they donated. I would also announce in the news that people and children should start riding bikes so they can put less pollution in the air.
And tomorrow they're coming back to Village Hall and we're going to be doing some Mayor stuff, which we're going to be planting some flowers and then we're going to come back for lunch and have a good time and we'll show you around my office and you can sit in a chair and take pictures, okay? So congratulations again, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the roll call, we didn't do our roll call, so let's do the roll call. Trustee Diaz?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Klug?
Sure.
Trustee Fritz?
Present.
Trustee DeSeyck?
Here.
Trustee Lima?
Here.
Trustee Brusinski and Mayor Kupicka, here. Okay, well the clerk showed that we have a quorum. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of May 5th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Klug, a second by Trustee Lima. Call the roll. Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeSeyck?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we have recognition tonight for some firefighter and paramedics.
Good evening, Mayor and elected officials, residents, and honored guests. This evening, we would like to recognize a good Samaritan as well as several of our firefighter, paramedics, who during the course of the last couple of months have made two lifesaving changes in people's lives by actually resuscitating them. So I'd like to call forward the individuals and then explain each of the two calls. So the first one is Ms. Dawn Eck. If you'd come forward, please. Firefighter, paramedic, Tim Boogus, paramedic Andrew Parker, firefighter, paramedic Blaine Schneider, firefighter, paramedic Andrew Adam Neiman, firefighter, paramedic David Cady, and on the second call firefighter, paramedic Locke, Graham Locke, and paramedic Greg Ostrom, some of whom could not make it this evening. With the individuals that we have here, we responded on March 18th to a pulseless victim. As the fire department responded to the call, we arrived and Dawn Eck was a good Samaritan bystander who had initiated CPR on a pulseless 69-year-old male. He was in pulseless ventricular fibrillation, which basically means is that he had expired. Through her efforts, as well as the defibrillation and the other lifesaving activities of the crew here, the gentleman was revived, he was transported to the hospital and has had a successful outcome. He attended, or he tried to attend to be here tonight via a previous commitment. The second call was for a call in Franklin Park where our ambulance responded mutual aid and firefighter Graham Locke and paramedic Ostrom arrived to assist Franklin Park. Again, the person was unresponsive, he was an 89-year-old male, unresponsive. Through their lifesaving actions and intervention, they were able to revive him and he too has had a successful outcome, both these individuals being residents here in Schiller Park. So without further ado, we'd like to present Dawn with a recognition certificate here. Mayor, if you'd come up and also, and then our firefighter, paramedics with a unit citation.
So this is for Dawn? Good to have your name on here. Congratulations.
We didn't put them in order, sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Personally, I think we have the best fire and police around, so. Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Come up to the microphone, please. Could you state your name?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Mario McCorda, I live at 3850 Scott Street in Schiller Park. I've been a resident for, I would say, approximately over 20 years.
Hi, my name is Andrew Fromfara, I live also in Schiller Park, almost five years, and you want to ask about my property?
Go ahead, what did you want to say or state through?
He owns the property at 4001 North Gas. We came in front of the board of the zoning approximately about a month ago?
Yeah.
Yes, and we got the copy of the ordinance and what I was told by John Zalud that we don't have to do anything with our survey, the only thing we got to do is go and get a plot of survey, and the lots are legal, we don't have to go in front of the zoning to get the lots approved. And I met with the building department, I believe it was two days ago?
Right.
And I was told that I have to go in front of the zoning to record, to get signatures on this plot. I did about four subdivisions in this village and the last one I did was at 3850 Scott Street and I purchased one lot and two lots, and I subdivided into two lots and I built a brand-new house on it and I never came in front of the board to do the subdivision. So our question is, do we still have to go in front of the board to get this approved? Because I'm confused.
It's all included in the one application, what's on it?
I haven't seen it from the record, sorry. But under normal circumstances, you have to go in front of the board.
Mayor, we did have the staff look into this. I asked the acting community development director and the assistant attorney to look at this.
We looked into it and regardless of what was said, the code is pretty specific that if someone tries to go to Cook County without the board approval, they would be fined and there'd be a penalty. Regardless of how things have been done in the past, the code is very specific in its language that this would have to go in front of the board for approval. I apologize to Mario.
We signed off on the subdivision.
We signed off on the variance, and the variance was contingent upon the subdivision being approved. I apologized to Mario, I didn't get a chance to apologize to Andrew for the miscommunication, but I told him it is very clear in the language of the code that they have to come back. We were able to get them on the next ZPA meeting, which is June 1st, and I told them that the board would likely be willing to approve it on June 2nd.
Mr. McCorda, can we, can you get together with the attorneys after the meeting? Can you stick around?
Sure.
Is that right? And then we, I thought we had everything settled the other day, but I guess...
Yes, we did, and I did met with those three gentlemen at the meeting two days ago and everything was okay. I did fill out the other application. The reason why I'm here, because I did this four times and I'm confused, that's why I'd like to find out. I want to make sure.
Maybe if this is being done wrong the fourth time, I don't know, so I can't tell you, but we'll get it straightened out.
The other three times what happened, I did came in front of the board because the lots were smaller, so I did came in front of the board and then it was approved, but the last one that I did, it was at 3850 Scott Street, didn't happen, so.
Like I said, why don't you get together with them again after the meeting and we'll double-check everything, okay?
Sure, no problem. Yeah, but we do have the application in place, so the other reason why I'm here, because I won't be able to be here, I'm leaving town on Monday, so I believe the next board meeting is June 1st, so, and I'm kind of helping those guys with the property, I'm not the owner of the property, they're really good friends of mine and I wanted to come into this town and build beautiful homes and I think that's what we should look for, you know, and that's why I'm right behind them, because I want to make sure that everything's going to be okay, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Those aren't good questions because from my experience, there are some towns where, I mean, every town has zoning and subdivision, two different things, sometimes they happen at the same time, but in some towns, the subdivision doesn't go to the zoning planning board, but here, I asked the staff to look and I don't know what the practice has been, but it does state very clearly in that ordinance. So we'll try to work with you and make this, you know, as smooth as we can.
Sure, I understand.
And apologize if you got, you know, confusing or wrong information before.
Yeah, sure, no problem, because I actually, I went to the village and the attorney wasn't there, so he wasn't sure what, I mean, he didn't hear me speaking with Mr. John Zalud and I asked him, I said, "Do we have to go in front of the zoning?" Because the house that I built was about eight years ago, so I thought the law is different now, so that's why I asked him, he says, "No, you don't have to do anything, everything's fine, you know, your lots are legal, the square footage is legal, I think the minimum's 50 by 120, 6,500 square feet." He goes, "You're fine, you're okay, the only variance you got to ask for is for the setbacks on one of the properties." And that's why, I'm just confused and that's why I'm here, asking the board.
We'll get it all straightened out.
Thank you very much.
We want your beautiful homes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks for sticking around. Okay, anyone else at this time? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda for consideration and action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Fritz, a second by Trustee Klug, call the roll, please. Klug?
Here, yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeSeyck?
Yes.
And Lima?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to the committee of the whole discussion items, take it away, Brad.
Okay, I'll just go down the list here as efficiently as I can, but if there are any questions, please let me know. First one is a recommendation to increase the maximum number of police officers by one. This was something that was a project, but there's an explanation in the drop box from the police chief that indicates that we have a couple of retirements pending, we have some other things going. I think we just wanted to make sure that we had this approval from you so that as they work with the Board of Fire and Police Commission in the months ahead to fill these positions and try to keep our police force up to where it should be or has been designated to be, that we'll be ready to build, so that's why it's up to them. Police Commander Wodonski, is there anything you'd like to add to that or is that pretty much covered?
I think so.
Okay, but if there are any specific questions, I'm sure you can address that. Okay, the next one, this is an informational item, this is not really up for action tonight, but just to let you know that I did sign, again, according to our codes, the manager can sign a, I think it's up, is it up for an argument? I don't remember now. Let me double-check that.
You are correct, Brad, it's just informational, it's not up for tonight.
No, it isn't, right. So we went ahead and submitted on my signature a request to the zoning planning appeals commission, a request to rezone a portion of the railroad yard property. And this is really in the context of the discussions we've had with representatives of the railroad yard to put us in a position where we can continue negotiating with them for use of that land down the road in a way that gives us the greatest flexibility for how we might place commercial and public facilities in this immediate area. Because right now, that whole piece of property is all industrial and we had made it clear to the representatives of the railroad that the village wants other options to be considered besides only industrial and they have been open to that, so this would be a consistent move with that. And it just strengthens our position as we go further into discussions with them, so that's why it's being presented. So it's more of a kind of strategic move on our part to look out for the village ahead of time. Otherwise, the other option we had, if you don't want to do this or if you don't want me to withdraw this, would be to just passively wait for the railroad to redevelop in whatever way they want. And I have to tell you, I can't recommend it, I'm suggesting that we be a little more proactive, so anyway, that's why it's there. Any questions?
This isn't a question so much as I would encourage you to do that because given the tone of the presentation from the consultant for the comprehensive plan, this is, you know, the presentationalist, that area was a major plank of what your plan was and I'm pretty, a little more information than, you know, the average person sitting in the audience and I think to them, it sounded like, "Oh, the village can do whatever they want with this, they've got 54 acres, it's going to be great." And they were talking, "What do you want to see here, what should we do with this?" And it's not exactly the situation, particularly right now. So, I mean, I would certainly encourage us to move forward, trying to rezone that as advantageously as we can, because it's probably our best method of leverage and I hope the next time that the consultants are in front of a committee like that or just the general public, that they're maybe a little clearer in terms of what we can redevelop and what we can't, because I don't think I'm imagining things that the way they presented it was, this is, and it is a great opportunity, but this is something we can do whatever we want with it, we're part of a much larger negotiation with a very big company.
Yes. Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that because, just for people in the audience that may not know, the Canadian Pacific Railroad has declared that that property is surplus and what that specifically means is that they are no longer using that for their railroad property, I should say, their railroad services that they're providing. In fact, even the containers and other activities you see over there is really a company that they have kind of leased the property to, to store and to move their commodities or product around. And so they're wanting to do something with this where they can eventually, you know, either they'll hold on to it or they'll eventually sell it. But that's why it just happens to be that this comprehensive plan that Trustee Lima mentioned that we had this public forum on coincides with the timing of this, so it's actually great timing for us to spend the time on this and we do need to try to crystallize it further, but this is just one step among many that might have to be taken as we go along. Any other thoughts of, yeah, okay. So that's just an informational item. Next one, okay, there was a Skyline Industrial, okay, this is another interesting and important site in town. Many people in town know that Atlas Toyota has moved out of town, they had four sites up there at River and Road and River Street and the new owners of that property have asked for a property assessment incentive because they want to remodel and place new tenants into those buildings and there's going to, it's going to be up for a comment later during the community development committee report. And I think the consensus during the committee, the whole discussion, was that we wouldn't take action on either the 6B or 7C tonight to give us a little more time to work on evaluating, but I'll leave that up to the committee report later to go into that. Any other questions or comments you want to add to that? Anybody? Okay. The next one, the emergency management system change, where we would go from Northwestern Community Hospital to Loyola University Medical Center, isn't that right, Chief? I understand you did ask our contact there to be here tonight, but please let us know who that is and briefly what this is.
Yes, we're proposing to move from Northwest Community Hospital, which is based in Arlington Heights, their medical system to Loyola's. I have project medical director, Dr. Mark Seashawn, here. If you have any questions for him, he's available. If not, he's been up since like 3 o'clock this morning and I'd like to excuse him so he can get a good night's sleep. Are there any questions?
You came here for no questions, seriously?
Mayor, that's fine.
How's it going, doctor?
At least I didn't have to follow the children. Thank you very much.
That's a tough act to follow, isn't it?
It's a very tough act.
So you're happy for us to be part of this now?
Absolutely. Loyola welcomes the Schiller Park Fire Department, the paramedics. I agree, I think they're some of the best paramedics I know, in addition to all the others that are in our system. We will provide them with education, we will provide the policies and procedures, and take, continue to take them into the next generation of training to make sure the citizens of Schiller Park are safe and well protected medically.
Tom Corso still giving you a hard time in Franklin Park?
Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, doctor.
Our clerk just wants, maybe you could explain which hospitals we would still actually be taking people to?
You're not gonna see any change?
Yeah, there's no change at all.
What the public will see on this?
The public won't see any change. You'll pick up the phone, dial nine-one-one, we'll still respond, we'll still take you to either Gottlieb or Resurrection or wherever the closest appropriate facility is. It's more of an administrative SOP, standard operating procedures and policies. The way that works with paramedics is, is the paramedics actually work under Dr. Seashaw's medical license. So he sets up all the SOPs and everything, he oversees everything as far as training. Loyola is a T-Chain hospital, so we feel that we are actually providing better care to the patients that we will see.
Thanks, Pete.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next one is a proposal from the community development building division to proceed with this backflow cross-connection inspection service. Can you explain that, Eric, a little bit, why we're doing this?
This is primarily a survey of the multifamily units, or rather, the dwellings, the actual buildings in town, to identify the number of backflow devices that are in each building. Each of those devices requires an annual inspection, which is, of course, accompanied by an inspection fee. For example, this particular building may have one backflow protection device or prevention device. We may come across a number of different buildings that have multiple backflow prevention devices. It's imperative for the protection of the village's water system, and in some cases, protection of the building's water supply, that each of these devices are inspected annually. Having any inventory of that would be extremely helpful, not only to us, but also to the water department, in case there is a problem, it can be identified and rectified in a timely fashion.
And I think this is actually, correct me if I'm wrong, this is another mandate under our code, but it's in accordance with the state plumbing code, isn't that right?
I believe that is in fact correct. A lot of the plumbing information is supervised and underneath the state plumbing code of 2014, and it is obviously recommended that we follow that particular code, as it is required to be adopted.
Any questions on that one?
No, I'm trying to reiterate that we had come through letters before.
Yes.
There were letters will be going through us, envelops, there to identify that we're part of not to cause a national confusion that they did before. Has been addressed and corrected, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll avoid that this particular time. Obviously, I need the proposal approved before I can get to that point, but, yeah, comment heard and understood, and it will not happen, if I say.
Yeah, let's don't send out any yellow postcards.
Postcards.
City of Schiller Park and whatever else was on there.
Yes.
Thanks for bringing that up, trustee. All right, and then, next one is mutual aid network with regard to public works. We hear a lot about police and fire, but what about public works? What's this all about, Eric?
IPW MAN is a mutual aid network that is statewide. We are part of some local mutual aid networks. This allows us to be part of a mutual aid network that is statewide. It allows us to offer support to downstate municipalities, as well as request support, meaning employees and equipment in the case of emergency. In most situations, if there's some kind of disaster, either flooding, snowstorm, anything like that, it's a regional area, and most of those networks that we're currently involved with are in our, you know, immediate area. So this allows us to draw from Southern Illinois, Western Illinois, Northern Illinois, to request support. It's a insurance policy to say, we're requesting help. It's a great network, over two-hundred-and-fifty communities, counties, DOTs are a part of it, so it's a great opportunity for Schiller Park to grant support if we have the ability to other agencies, and then also request support if we need.
You do speak to cost? They want it to be?
Sure. The cost is one hundred dollars annually, so a hundred dollars a year of insurance policy if we have any kind of disaster or any issue, so it's definitely worth the money.
Eric, a little further with the cost. If we were to go and help another community, we would send one or more of our employees, and we would bear the cost for that, correct?
Sure. Sure. So what happens is per the agreement, the first five days that you were to send an employee, so we were to send an employee down to Southern Illinois to help out with something, and our equipment, we would bear the cost. Schiller Park would bear the cost of the employee for that time. They would be supplied by the request, or a place to stay, and the food, so they would be taken care of down there, but we'd pay for the salary. Same thing if we were to request anything here. If we were to request assistance for a few days, and it's local, people responding, there's no cost to us. The agencies that would send help would bear the cost for the employees. If you get anything longer than five days, we're talking about a major disaster, most likely they're getting into a FEMA issue, we would then bear the cost for anything greater than five days, but again, that would be FEMA reimbursable.
Okay, you have a question here? All right. This next item, it's the application for Class A liquor license. I just, you know, reported at the committee of the whole that this former Eclipse, which is up there by the Cafe Mirage, that they applied, his lollipops is still under consideration by the license committee and the liquor control commissioner, so there's no action on that tonight, but I just wanted to update everybody on what they're doing. They're modeling the place even though they don't have a license approved or guaranteed, certainly. So that's all I had on that. Any questions?
Yeah, very quickly.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, see that we've got, tidily, we have a license committee set for the next week.
That's right.
Are they planning on coming to re-present? From what I remember, that everything got sort of put on hold because we weren't pleased with the depth and breadth of their presentation.
Right.
Are they planning on coming? I'm sorry.
Sandra is, she, oh, is she?
Yeah, they're coming on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, because Sandra did check to see if they were available. That was one, that was one of the factors we considered in setting the date, right? Yeah. So, hopefully they will be. I mean, we'll know when the date comes, for sure.
Well, we wanted to have a meeting tonight, but two members, two trustees.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Right. Yeah, it could've been tonight, but just didn't, couldn't work out. Didn't have a quorum. Okay, we had that executive session, which I can't talk about that here. The only other thing I wanna mention, we have these committees, so you can see what's in committee there, so people that are chairman of these committees, if that looks accurate, or it's not, let me know. I just try to, you know, we move these different items along, you know, as quickly as we can, as we, as we're able to. There are some that have been there for a while, that's just the nature of the topics, but I don't have anything in particular that we need to bring up. Oh, one, oh, we were gonna mention the administration finance, right? You're gonna mention that later, but we might not do that until June.
Yeah, I was gonna cover it one more time.
Yeah, you can deal with that later. I don't need to get into that. Okay. And then, so the only other thing, the manager's report, I put that in the Dropbox, and there's, I don't know, about a dozen items in there, where I cover the comp plan process that was referenced earlier, and the advisory committee that we had meet, and the public forum that we had last week. We've got more work to do on that. If I provide an update on the grants that have been pending or that we're looking at right now, that's always an ongoing work in progress. If you have any questions about any of those, let me know. Another public meeting that's coming up that we've been trying to let people know about is the floodplain study update, which is the culmination of the engineer that we hired in cooperation with the Village of Franklin Park to take a look at that whole area and identify the changes.
Twenty June?
Yes, the date of that is the twenty-fourth, right?
Six.
Yeah, thank you. Twenty-fourth at six o'clock at the community center is when this report's going to be presented. You know, even after we present this report, I'll just offer the quick comment that we're probably going to have to do whatever we can to try to bring this information to the appropriate federal authorities so that they can act on it. I mean, it's one thing for us to look at it, but it's another thing for those that actually make the decision on the floodplain. What is, state officials too, right, Patrick? Does IDNR have some say on this? And we've got Army, what Army Corps of Engineers does, and who else? Federal FEMA?
Right. It'll be a two-step dance. First, the modeling and the results will all be submitted to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for concurrence. Once the state concurs, then it will go to FEMA for the actual map changes.
Yeah. So we don't know, we have no idea what the timeframe is on that doing.
What they said at Franklin Park meeting was, they intended to submit in June, and they were, I think, conservatively giving a year for each of those agencies to review.
It would be nice to push that one quicker. Another thing was, I was happy to be at the unveiling of the Robinson family artifacts, which were basically headstones, in case you didn't hear about it. It was just incredible to see these real items in solid stone, going back to the, actually, what, to, not the prior century, the century before that, right? It's just amazing that they were able to find these and bring them forward. So there was a very nice unveiling ceremony, and archaeologist Dan Malone was there, along with members of the family, to present this, so I just have a little brief update on that in my report. I also put in there a little case study of a traffic study that the police department worked on over there on Scott Street, just to show you what we do when someone complains about speeding through a neighborhood, that that trailer can be set up, in case anybody wants us to really see what's happening in the neighborhood during a twenty-four hour over several days. That report just tells you what the outcome was in that case. And then I just got some other information here about ComEd. And Mayor and I went to a ComEd, very good workshop yesterday. Oh, air noise update. I tried to provide an update, Mayor, I know you get to this a lot more than I do, but the bottom line was that you were at a meeting, and I thank you for your advocacy on behalf of the community, to get that support from the Superior Air Commission, and then bringing back to the Oh, Air Noise Compatibility Commission, the Fly Quiet, anything we can do to get the noise abatement. That's all been a big thing going on in the last month or so. So I just wanted to give you a little update on that. And I've got some other things here, but I'm not gonna read them all, but I'll refer to them all. Transportation and conference activities. Oh, and a manufacturing workshop, we went to, Tom, Simi.
Simi.
Simi, thank you. A Manner Tools invited the mayor and I to this manufact, it's basically their association called the Training and Manufacturing Association. It was Prairie State College, and it was very interesting to hear some of their concerns. You know, manufacturing is a big thing here in Schiller Park, and so we had a chance to talk to some other people around the area that had concerns about such things as the cost of workers' comp, transportation, transit, trying to get workers into their places where they do business, it's not always easy. Just the promotion of trying to get people to work in manufacturing. They're always out there with high schools and with colleges, especially Community College, trying to get people working jobs, get them trained up, people still need jobs. So that was a very good group, I think, if you know. We should continue to stay in touch with them, I think. That said, probably talked too long. Thank you. Do you have anything, engineer? You on what you said?
I'll make up for your extended bit by having gone further.
Eric, anything?
I don't have anything specific to add, directly related. However, the assistant village manager and I did attend a comprehensive planning meeting with Metro on Tuesday morning. There was a lot of discussion from our consultant planner, and Metro was, I believe, responsive to the planner's request for their examination of details relating to the train station and the area that they are gonna look at here along Irving Park Road. Planner, as I understand it, will submit a request for information to Metro for their response as part of the process to identify what can be suggested for the comprehensive plan. That's all I have.
Mayor? Eric, go.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Just one quick thing, next week, Public Works will be doing creek maintenance on Crystal Creek, the channelized section, there's some overgrowth of some plant material there that restricts flow, so they'll be going in next week over a two-day period to do some moving of that material, with the flow of the creek.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention a couple of activities that are coming up. One is the Wall of Honor Ceremony on Saturday, that is at probably ten AM at Claude Tower Park, across the street, and we have, I think it's sixteen or eighteen new names going on the wall in the, June, from the Historical Society, they are in the Legion, nice event for the community, so we'll be doing that on Saturday. And then Sunday, the Recreations Department's hosting their annual dance recital at Lyden, eleven AM, at the Lyden High School Auditorium.
Eric, anything?
Well, unfortunately, the crowd thinned out, because I was hoping to make a pitch for the annual cop iron top date tomorrow. Our officer's gonna be out at the Donken Donuts in Panheim, in United Parkway, raising money for Special Olympics, so if anybody is in the area, would ask that you stop by, give generously, it's a very good cause. Second point, tomorrow.
It starts at five-thirty in the morning, right?
Yeah.
Five-thirty, and it goes till when?
Ten. They usually break off somewhere around three, four.
So tomorrow, you're saying?
That's tomorrow, right.
And you get a free donut?
That's right, free donut, if you donate.
Get there, because I think the first fifty people or something get a free t-shirt or something like that.
That, I'm not sure about.
Get there early. Donate, you know? Yeah.
And also tomorrow, NICS, Northern Illinois Police Alarm System SWAT team, which we are a member of, they will be conducting a very large, full-team training exercise tomorrow with the old hostess plan. It's gonna be a big production, probably about seventy-five to one-hundred squad cars out there, along with SWAT armored vehicles and their command posts, so it's gonna be a big show, but if any of your constituents come to you with any questions or concerns, just a training exercise.
Thanks, Eric.
I just, one quick thing, just wanted to mention, this website did launch successfully last Thursday. Started correcting some issues that had been discovered, and working with all the different departments to try to update some things, but overall, it's been well-received. And, you know, I certainly want to encourage the public to check it out, there's more opportunities to sign up and be a member of the website, sign up for updates when agendas are posted, you're gonna email telling you that, you know, the agenda was different, or they were interested in what's posted, that kind of thing, so I encourage you to, everybody in the community to participate in the website, and help make it a good tool for the village.
The Fire Department would like to invite everybody tomorrow evening, six-thirty to eight-thirty, to the Firehouse for a End of the Year Ice Cream Social, so all the ice cream you can eat, six-thirty, eight-thirty tomorrow.
Don't miss an ice cream, you're right up your alley.
Ice cream and donuts, this is my perfect day tomorrow. No comments from the Fire Department.
Rick, anything?
No, wait.
Bob?
No, everything I had, I trust. I'm not complaining.
Russ?
I have a question about one of your bills. Your bill, should I get?
I'll do that.
You can do it now.
Okay. There's a bill that's 41,000 for concrete work that was done over Area 3. And that question, your bill, is want to make sure it was checked by us, make sure work is complete and correct. That's why I would, there was another question before we paid the bill.
I don't think that Eric was listening.
No, I was listening. Yeah, that, the list was put together by the street department and everything's been checked and completed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Larry?
Nothing at this time, there.
All right. Just a couple other things to remind you. We have St. Maria Goretty's got their 5K this weekend. If you feel like running, get out there. We also, we have the memorial wall. Let's see, there was something else. I think, oh, we have the motorcycles coming through, right? Yeah. Just so you know, if you see 100 motorcycles going through town, they're doing, it's a fundraiser for MS.
Bikers for MS.
Right, bikers for MS. And they're stopping at different bars. And apparently Horseshoe is one of them.
Ken's is another one.
And Ken's is another one. So if you see quite a few motorcycles going through town, that's what they're doing. So.
When is it?
Saturday. Yeah, it's Saturday. Also, I just want to encourage anyone, if you know a neighbor who's in a floodplain, please encourage them to come to the meeting on Tuesday. I'm going to do a reverse manual one to remind people, but, you know, please encourage people to come to that so they can get further information. We really, really are trying hard to push this along. One of the other things I wanted to mention also on the website, we just put some information. I went to a mayor's caucus meeting yesterday. It was extremely interesting. They had some speakers about lead poisoning from, and it's called healthy housing. The presentations are online. And although they're slides, you can still get a good gist of what was said at the meeting. Very interesting reports, how we can have healthy housing and, you know, even houses that we have in our community that may, were built in the 50s, could still have lead in them. And one of the things I did find very interesting is that people who come in and they're going to remodel their houses, they're women who are expecting newborns and they, yeah, we're going to remodel the baby's bedroom. And they unknowingly release this lead into the air and they breathe it. And they say that that's what causes this lead poisoning and, you know, people don't even know that it's happening. So they need to be very careful. I heard that the gentleman from UIC, actually, they have a program for inspectors, which I'm going to push our inspectors to get certified on. They show them how to look for lead, what causes it, what the problems are. So it was really a good presentation. So I encourage anybody, if they go on the website, to look at those and you get some really good information. We also are going to have some flyers that we're going to make copies and have them at Village Hall. So we have that. So we're going to move on to the committee of the reports for consideration in action. Public safety with Chairman Diaz absent. Trustee Klug is going to take that.
Mayor, for later on, agendas and ordinance, increasing number of officers recommended by the Department that we will organize. Also like to make a motion to approve the changes in Village of Shore Park Emergency Medical Services of paramedic system from Northwest Community Hospital to Loyola University Medical Center. Not to exceed $15,000.
Okay, a motion by trustee Klug and a second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll. Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Also like to make a motion to hire a part-time paramedic for the Department.
A motion by trustee Klug, a second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Okay, trustee Klug. And now we're back to you, trustee Klug, for recreation.
I have no report for recreation.
That's an easy one. Okay. Okay, we move on to License Committee. Chairman Fritz.
Madam President, fellow board members, I just have a notice. The License Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, May 26th. That is no longer tentative. It is at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 26th of May. With your license.
Thank you. Anything else?
Madam President, fellow board members, that concludes my report.
Public Works Chairman DeZacki.
Nothing to vote on, but we will have later on in the agenda ordinance recommending, recommended by the Public Works Department, become a member of the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Administration and Finance, Chairman Lima.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have two items. First item, I would move to approve the current list of bills in the amount of $626,696.50. Just very briefly, it's a little higher than normal we're paying for garbage service and water service.
I have a motion by trustee Lima. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Klug. Call the roll.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
Second item is nothing to vote on. The committee's planning to meet. We're going to push this back and it'll list the fourth week of May or first week of June. On the agenda, it's likely going to be either the first week or second week of June to discuss primarily the healthcare proposal. Mostly my report is concluded.
Thank you. Community Development, trustee Lima is taking Chairman Berdzensky's place.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have several items. First, I have a motion to approve an agreement with Backflow Solutions Incorporated to perform multifamily dwelling cross-connection inspections for backflow prevention in the amount of $75 each for an estimated 317 dwellings in the total approximated amount of $22,775.
Are you making the motion? Because you said I have a motion, so.
I think I have a motion to approve.
Okay. So I have a motion by trustee Lima. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by trustee Klug. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Second item, I would move to table the 6B tax incentive requests from Skyline Properties for parcels two and three for industrial use on River Street. This is a former Atlas Toyota property.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Lima, a second by trustee DeZacki. Call the roll. Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. It is tabled.
And my final item is the Community Development Committee will likely meet again soon to discuss the other two parcels of the same site for perhaps a separate taxes, excuse me, tax incentive program. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, report of the mayor for consideration in action. We have a proclamation of EMS Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2016. Do we actually have that proclamation? Okay. So we are designating the week of May 15th through the 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Barbara J. Piltaver, Mayor of Shore Park, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong: Call to Care. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Okay, there's just the one appointment that we have to do for, from Lieutenant Greg Swayantek to Chief Tioto. This is requesting a hire of a new part-time paramedic, Michael Newkirk. And we, okay, but this, no, this is the office. Yeah, we went, yeah, we went, the, yep, I knew this way. Wrong one. Okay, wrong one. We already approved that. Don't worry, Greg, you're getting it. Okay. This is from Chief Brigakis. We need to appoint Brian Bonoff, right? Bonoff. He's been an auxiliary police officer since November of 20, since November 2013. And he would, requested of the chief to go to the police academy to be certified and upgraded to a part-time police officer status. In order for this to take place, he has to be appointed to part-time officer status prior to being sent for the training. So if I could get a motion to approve his appointment to a part-time police officer. So he could send.
Motion to approve the from auxiliary to part-time.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Klug and a second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. So we have his appointment. Okay, other matters. An ordinance authorizing an increase in the maximum number of police officers by one and notify the Board of Fire and Police Commission to initiate the testing and appropriate process. I have a motion?
So move.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Lima, a second by trustee DeZacki. Call the roll. Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Ordinance number, please.
16-3054.
Okay, I have an ordinance authorizing the execution of the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Agreement between the villages of Shore Park and ITMAN. I'M.
I need to be in.
I, okay. ITMAN. It looks good. Okay, do I have a motion?
Second. Second.
Okay, motion by trustee DeZacki and a second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
DeZacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And ordinance number?
16-3055.
Anyone at this time in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Which Dunkin' Donuts was it?
The one on Mannheim.
Where, which, by the gas station, the new gas station?
Yeah, the gas station. Yes. Okay, we have no executive session. Before we leave, I do want to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. Please remember to remember those veterans and those that served our country that defended us and our freedoms and died doing so. You know, this isn't about having a barbecue. It's about honoring our veterans. So please remember to do that if there's a ceremony that you can attend. Even if coming to the Wall of Honor would, you know, definitely help. So, but on that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a great one.